This site, a bridge home, is gonna house 100 of those people. Move them directly from street into a safe place to be. You have three meals a day provided for you. In addition to that, you have all these other services we're gonna bring to you. So that this is just your first stop, but your final stop is your own place with your own keys.
This is not a thing where we can just have a party today, turn our backs and wipe our hands. We have to engage with this facility and we have to engage with the community of neighbors that will live here with us. This isn't a problem we can't solve. Don't tell me we can't do things that will house our brothers and sisters. We can and we will, my friends. This is a bright spot and a very tough problem that we all face, but history will record that we're facing it, facing it head on, and we're getting it done.
What happens when the LAPD, the LA Dodgers, and the group Shoes That Fit team up at an elementary school? Well, it not only helps kids in an economically challenged community, it also turns into a giant shoe party. Anna Marcos takes in the back-to-school shoe giveaway.
Look at that! 200 kids are trying on brand-new pairs of shoes just in time for the start of the school year. And each shoebox has their name on it.
I love them and I always wanna keep them on my legs.
Smiling faces and so much excitement are the order of the day as kids at Ricardo Lizaraga Elementary in South LA get ready to try on their brand-new and free pairs of shoes. You're one of the few kids who's not wearing her shoes. Why not?
I wanna save them so they won't get dirty.
And many of you may be wearing shoes that were handed down to you from your brother or sister, or a friend, or a yard sale. And so today, the opportunity to have a brand-new pair of shoes, in some instances, it may be your first pair.
And it's not just anybody helping these kids lace up the new athletic shoes. Chief Michael Moore himself from the LAPD and LA Dodgers outfielder A.J. Pollak are waiting on them, hand and foot, you could say.
These young people are coming from a community that is impoverished, that is challenged, and a community sometimes the only time you see an officer is when he or she's running to a call, or responding to an emergency or crisis. And the opportunity for an officer just to stand and smile and maybe bend a knee, play a game, have some small talk with a young person is too few. Today is an opportunity to do that.
We're able to bring a lot of shoes to some really happy kids.
The shoe giveaway is a partnership between the LAPD, the LA Dodgers Foundation, and Shoes That Fit, a nonprofit group.
We have a whole measuring packet. We work with schools to make sure the kids are measured beforehand, and then we order the shoes in that size.
So it allows them to be more confident, be more active, because they have a pair of shoes that fit.
We wanna make sure that students are coming to school ready to learn. And one thing that they do need is the proper clothing, the proper materials to get started. Ready, set, go!
And the best part for the kids...
My shoes are fast, too!
Your shoes are fast, too?
The kids seem to think their new shoes give them wings or something.
I go fast with my shoes, and my mommy's gonna be happy with them.
You think they'll make you go faster?
Yes.
For the grown-ups, speed is nice, but they also hope the new shoes give the kids a little extra bounce in their step that just may also bounce up their academic performance.
There's now also a new mobile trailer to help deliver the shoes to various schools. A helipad at the Olive View Medical Hospital in Silmar is back in business after a much-needed restoration. It will now serve as an additional resource for firefighters during the upcoming fire season and into the future.
Welcome to the unveiling of one of our newest firefighting resources.
This heli-spot was inoperable due to damage that we suffered during a brush fire over a decade ago. We now have a brand-new heli-spot.
The northeast San Fernando Valley is very familiar with tragic devastation.
Right now, we're in the most extreme part of the fire season. From our perspective, it's not if it will happen, it's just when it will happen.
This is critical, because we've had historically large fires in this part of the city, such as the Mayor and the Sayer and the Creek Fire.
This is what it's about. This is good government working together for the benefit of the entire region.
We are improving public safety for the residents of the northeast San Fernando Valley and greater Los Angeles region.
I'm also pleased to share that our new helicopter parked behind us is a 2019 Augusta Westland AW-139, which we placed into service just a few weeks ago at a cost of $18 million. Our helicopters are capable of dropping 450 gallons of water per drop and are available for response 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. So in closing, your Los Angeles City and County Fire Departments are prepared for the busy brush season that's ahead of us.
If you're looking for a spot to go biking free of cars, this may be it. A pedestrian and bike path that runs along the LA Riverbank and Studio City between Coldwater Canyon and Witsit Avenue has just opened. It marks the completion of the second phase of the city's LA River Revitalization Master Plan.
Mayor Garcetti's vision, and many others, has been to bring this river back to life. And we bring it back to life, a segment at a time.
Previously, there was no access to the river. It was basically gated off and used for city purposes. But now that they've been adding sections so people can bike and walk and just even some park features.
It's also a very big step forward in connecting all of these segments into one continuous, wonderful recreational asset that extends from Cogge Park all the way to Universal City and beyond.
This is access for the community as we strive to increase accessibility for every resident in the city to be close to a park within a half-mile walking distance. This also represents that huge endeavor that we're after here in the city of Los Angeles.
I look for places like this to ride with my six-year-old daughter. People wanna be able, people wanna have safe places to go and walk and bike.
I grew up in this neighborhood, and there's a number of businesses that are just behind the LA River, so having access to it, it's been something I've been waiting for for decades.
The path, which used to be a maintenance access road, features new paving, fencing, trees, and bike racks. A bridge housing facility for women opens, television shows filmed in LA are honored, and a Caribbean festival offers up cultural and culinary delights. All this in City V. Councilmember Mitchell Farrell put the spotlight on locally-made TV shows that are nominated for Emmy Awards with the Made in Hollywood honors. The awards recognize projects that keep productions in California.
This is really something to celebrate. These are jobs in the tens of thousands that have come back to the city of Los Angeles and to the region, and that deserves some celebratory applause right there.
Made in Hollywood.
The Gardner Street Women's Bridge Housing Center opened its doors recently. City leaders were there to celebrate the grand opening. The center will house 30 women at a time and will include staff, security, and onsite services. The African-American Caribbean Festival at La Mert Park Village was a fun-filled happening that included music from a variety of artists. The second annual event was free to the public. It's not very often that the community has a chance to recognize and thank their local firefighters. That's why Councilmember Bob Blumenfield got everyone together recently for some barbecue.
Five, four, three, two, one, let's roll the movie! Well, this is an honor-a-hero event, but we wanted to make this also a chance to meet different first responders. So we have police, we have fire, we have emergency preparedness folks. At 8 o'clock at night, we're gonna show a movie, Incredibles 2, to make it fun for the whole family and make it a nice experience. Also have free hot dogs and hamburgers, and the fire department's grilling it up. Firefighters have volunteered to do that.
Tonight, the LA City Fire Department Union was asked to provide the Moab, mother of all barbecues, and we cooked approximately 350 hamburgers and 300 hot dogs.
I mean, it's all about community, and this is a day about the community, getting in touch with our emergency preparedness folks, our police, our fire, et cetera, and building communities.
You gotta yell loud, hey, hold on to it, touch it. Water! Water! Louder! Water! Water!
I don't think they get tanked enough for what they do, you know? They risk their lives every day, and they do a great job, and we need to show them that we care, we appreciate what they do. There should be more of this, like, every day, you know? They're always there, and they're like invincible heroes.
I don't think any firefighter ever considers himself a hero. It's just something we're doing for the citizens and the community, and stuff that we love to do, to help our community, help our people, helping our family. The people of this city are our family.
Love tacos? Well, who doesn't, right? Then head on over to a taco festival, visit your favorite museum for free, and dust off those roller skates or rent ones for a good cause. All this in Things to Do. Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez presents the Silmar Taco Festival, a free food and music festival featuring the tastiest taco and culinary creations in the northeast San Fernando Valley. Have a fun-filled day with live music, a taco-eating contest, car show, and of course tacos from Silmar. You don't wanna miss out on Silmar Taco Festival, happening Saturday, September 21st, from 12 to 10 p.m. at Silmar Park. For more details, check out their listing on Eventbrite. Museum Day is a one-day event where participating museums and cultural institutions across the country provide free entry to anyone with a Museum Day ticket. These downloadable tickets are one ticket per email address and admit two people per ticket. Come discover LA art and culture at Museum Day 2019, happening throughout Los Angeles on Saturday, September 21st. For more details, visit smithsonianmag.com/museumday. In recognition of World Alzheimer's Day, the Grand Park Foundation hosts All Skate for Alzheimer's. Bring the whole family to check out downtown LA's first-ever outdoor roller skating rink. Skate, play, and eat as we celebrate the heroic efforts and services provided daily by Alzheimer's and dementia caregivers. Three days of fun await at the All Skate for Alzheimer's event, happening September 20th through the 22nd at Grand Park in downtown LA. For tickets, check out their listing on Eventbrite. Check out the LA Fashion Festival, where progressive ideas meet immersive cultural experiences through film, retail, and beauty. This two-day festival includes fashion films, workshops, and pop-up experiences. The festival aims for meaningful exchanges via cutting-edge brand experiences, hands-on master classes, and thought-provoking panel discussions. Explore an event where textiles and sustainability converge. It's the Los Angeles Fashion Festival, happening September 20th and 21st at Film Studios. For more, visit lafashionfestival.com. And that's a look at some things to do. That's it for this edition. I'm Yana K. From all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityv.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more of LA This Week.
Good morning, I'm glad to have you here. 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 I'm glad to have you here.
Today is Tuesday, September 17th. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. Madam Clerk, we have a quorum. Let's run through the agenda.
Bloomingville Bonin, Buscayino Sadio, Harris Dawson, Weezer Coretts, Krikorian Lee, Martinez, O'Farrell Price, Rodriguez, Rue Wesson. Ten members present, Anna Corr, Madam President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Krikorian moves, and Mr. Price seconds next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Coretts moves, and Mr. Bonin seconds next.
Madam President, today is Tuesday, and time for the flag salute.
Mr. Rue, would you please see us in our pledge of allegiance?
If everyone could please stand and join me in the flag salute. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and run through the agenda.
Madam President, a corrective transportation committee report has been posted and circulated for item 39, and there is a request to continue this item for one week to September 24th, and additionally, continue item 1D to October 2nd, and additionally, 1B to October 15th.
Okay, without objection, that will be the order next.
Item 1 is an item noticed for public hearing.
Do we have any cards on this item?
Yes, there are cards on the item.
Hold that on the desk. Next.
Items 2 through 52 are items for which public hearings have been held. There are requests to hold item 27 and 38 on the desk for amending motions.
Okay, members, are there any specials on these items? Okay, let's go ahead and hold on the... Mr. Bonin?
For 38, if you hold that for an amending motion?
Yes.
And 39 continued for one week?
Yes.
And 39 continued for one week? Yep, got all those.
Way ahead of me.
Any other specials, members? Mr. Krikorian?
Forty-four, please, Madam President.
Let's go ahead and vote on the remaining items. Let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Madam Clerk, what's next?
And Madam President, the ordinances for items 26 and 25 will be held over one week unless reconsidered later today with 12 members present.
Very well.
That takes council to items 53 through 62, which are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Without objection, those items are now before us. Are there any cards on these items?
Yes, there are cards on all the items.
Let's go ahead and hold those.
And Madam President, that then takes council back to presentations, items called special or general public comment.
Very well. We're going to go ahead and go into presentations. Mr. O'Farrell, for a quick announcement.
Thank you, Madam President. It is always nice when we can celebrate young women engineers. And so today, we have with us, from the Los Angeles Beirut Sister Cities Organization, Student Civil Engineering Program. With us, and if you step forward, Julie Yunes and Sarah El Cadri from Lebanese University. A little bit about the Los Angeles Beirut Sister City Organization and the committee. It was established in 2006 to create a bridge of understanding and friendship between Los Angeles and Beirut. The aim is to create opportunities for business, educational, cultural, social exchanges, governmental exchanges, so both cities may continue to prosper and build toward a bright future. I had the great honor and pleasure of traveling to Beirut 13 summers ago now with Ms. Amira and Ferris Webby, and I think you were there as well, Tommy. And it was really one of the most enriching experiences of my life. It was a whirlwind tour, and the culture between the two cities is alive and well and improves both municipalities more than I can tell you. So just to acknowledge these wonderful, talented, young engineering students today, I'd like to present a certificate to Julie Yunes, certificate hereby presented to you on behalf of the L.A. City Council, and Sarah El Cadri. Welcome to Los Angeles. Enjoy your immersive, intensive course while you're here, and we look forward to seeing you in Beirut.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. I'll get some pictures.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Let's go ahead and take up multiple speakers. Corey Schmidt, are you here? Corey, you're speaking on seven items.
Seven items, okay.
Do you know what items you signed up for?
Can you put them back up real quick?
You're speaking at item 1?
Yeah, that's fine, okay.
Fifty-three.
Fifty-four, fifty-six.
Fifty-four and fifty-seven through... Fifty-four through fifty-seven.
Okay, all right, that's fine. All right, Corey Schmidt, for the record, I want to speak on item number 1, and basically in regards to nuisances. Large buildings, I believe, are considered nuisances that create large amounts of noise and erode privacy. It's a large issue that I have, especially a private one, but it turns into a public one when it affects the entire community. So I just wanted to bring that up because it's an issue that's going to start growing in this city as we continue to build. So, okay, so we skipped over a bunch of the ones I was going to talk about. Number 27, I think, is a good idea. Hotels not paying the TOT tax if they're going to house the homeless. I think that's a good idea. Number 38 for the next-gen bus service.
If you want to talk about the ones for which the hearing is already held, you can do that in the general public. Otherwise, you should stick to 1, 53 through 57.
I'm not sure what you just said. It cut off a little bit. Okay, so something about 55, Long Beach Rail Expansion. I think that... I like the idea of the trains coming through. I think that the problem with that will lead to what I was just talking about, is the development and the overdevelopment and the erosion of privacy and the nuisances, basically. So, try not to get interrupted here. Okay, 56, 57. Trying to stick to items that are here before public comment. Oh, 59, I was curious, because I didn't get to speak to 44 on the economic strategy. I've got a good... I've got a good plan, but save that for later. 59, I wanted to know more about what the idea is for East Hollywood improvement. I'd be interested to, you know, know what's on the... What's on the noggin, because I'd like to lend my brain as well. Let's see. San Pedro Little Italy Project, Colorado Undercrossing. I mean, the ones I wanted to speak on were already kind of passed through. So let's go to general public comment.
You have your one minute for general public comment, Corey.
So what I wanted to bring up was, I wanted to talk today about black people and the police. So I just wanted to see if there was a way that we could figure out what the problem is and how we can get through it. I was speaking with the guys over in West L.A., and they said that they could use some more funding, and I was thinking if we trade maybe some more funding, maybe we could get through all of this. And then, let's see, what else did I want to talk about today? Let's see. So let's just, since I only have like 20 seconds left, I just want to reiterate the First Amendment and the Second Amendment are crucial, because the First Amendment protects the Second, and the Second protects the rest of them. So I just want to instill that there's a lot of people that are trying to take those away from us, and I really, really don't want to be a slave. So, you know, speaking on my prior issue, I would prefer not to. Thank you.
Thank you, Corey. We're going to go ahead... Members, we're going to go ahead and vote on items 53 through 56. Let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, now let's go ahead and vote on items 58 through 62. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we're going to go ahead and close the multiple speaker cards for today's agenda. Mr. Rue, thank you for your patience, sir.
Come on up. Good morning, colleagues. Today is a happy day to recognize Deaf Awareness Month, and as the Chair of the City's Health, Education, Neighborhoods, Entertainment, Parks, Arts, and Rivers Committee, I am proud to be standing here today to recognize September as Deaf Awareness Month. I want to thank Stephen Simon and his Department on Disability, and also highlight Tyrone Oraguzi and the Deaf Festival Planning Committee for their contributions to the annual Deaf Festival, a festival that promotes the city and county services to our deaf and hard-of-hearing communities. It is estimated that 3 million deaf and hard-of-hearing people live in California, with over 800,000 in greater Los Angeles alone. The deaf population in America has made so much progress through equal access law and educational advancement, but this is far from enough. There are numerous challenges to living in a hearing-based society. For example, accessing quality education for deaf or hard-of-hearing students, securing employment, and finding job opportunities. That's why today, this month, is so important, as we continue advocating for greater resources for the deaf and hard-of-hearing community. Now I'd like to introduce Stephen Simon, the General Manager of the Department of Disability, to say a few words about Deaf Awareness Month.
Thank you, Councilmember. Good morning, Councilmembers. You really just heard it there from the Councilmember about how important Deaf Awareness Month is. We take for granted that we just show up at an event and we hear what's happening. But here at the City of Los Angeles, we make sure we have the type of support and services for our deaf and hard-of-hearing community that we want to make truly exceptional for any city in the U.S. So we are expanding, for example, video remote interpreting to over 400 public counters in the City of Los Angeles. So if you're a victim that shows up at a police station, or you're a constituent that shows up at a library, you need a plan check over at Building and Safety, you can use video remote interpreting to make sure you get those services like any other Angelino would. We are dramatically expanding the number of providers of sign language interpreting and CART, which is captioning services, to make sure that all of our city meetings are fully accessible to our community. And as Councilmember Rue mentioned, the city is also committed to sharing and supporting extraordinary deaf culture that's here in Los Angeles and really across the West, and we do that with Deaf Festival. So I'm really glad that some of the key leadership from this year's Deaf Festival are here to join us, and I'm going to turn it back to Tyrone Oraguzi. We're all working on getting your name, Tyrone, to say a few words about Deaf Festival and how important a partnership with the city is. Tyrone?
Hello? I'd like to say thank you to Stephen, Councilmember Rue. I also want to thank the council for your continued support of the Deaf Festival and Deaf Awareness Month. I want to thank you for actually providing funding. It really made a huge difference. I'd like to thank Supervisor Hilda Solis for their office's work. I would also like to continue to thank people for, especially Bertha Velazquez, for her work and her leadership, and also helping with the supervisor's office to provide things such as free haircuts. One thing that I would like to say is talking about Bertha's daughter, who they've been involved in the city event for quite some time. The experience and the history that they've got bringing to this event has been extraordinary. So I want to thank Ms. Bertha Velazquez as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Stephen, and thank you, Tyrone. Finally, I'd like to introduce one of three amazing individuals who have taken the mantle to be the emcees for Deaf Festival, and that is Jerome Starr, who has redefined disability into a gift ability, and are actively engaging the community to empower more individuals and spread awareness. Jerome?
Hello? I would also like to echo the thanks. I'd like to thank the community for picking me as being the emcee for the Deaf Festival. It was an absolute pleasure. I saw a lot of smiles on the faces of the deaf community that were there, and I want to thank you, the City Council, for your support and your investment in making those smiles occur. It meant a lot to us, to the deaf community, and to the community of disabled individuals in general. So I'd like to thank you and everybody behind me. Thank you.
Well, thank you again, Jerome. Thank you again, Tyrone. And I want to thank everyone here for advancing this very important cause. And with that, I'd like to present... Oh, here it is, okay. I'd like to present a certificate to Jerome on behalf of the City Council for all of your efforts in the community and for being part of Deaf Festival 2019.
Thank you, Mr. Rue. Members, we're going to go ahead and vote on item 27. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote. Okay, we're going to move on to item number 1, members. Item number 1A, David Darshwin, are you here? Sir David Darshwin? Come on up. You're speaking on item 1A?
General comment.
Well, I have you down for item 1A, so you don't want to speak on item 1A?
No.
Do you want your general public comment, since you're up here?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, my name is David Darish, and I have a... I built a property on 1657 Golden Gate Avenue, and I cannot finish the construction. It's a Mitch area. You're talking about shortage of housing, and now you want to force the structure to be vacant for one year because DWP wants to relocate the water meter, and we cannot put a porch and sidewalk, and also we need gas line. I'm talking to Mitch's office for three months to know available, so I'm coming here and asking you all to do it. DWP told me they have... They have forms, and you, the council, can give me the free to go, because the problem is the surface of the street, we didn't get the notice, and they have a moratorium for one year. So the council has to pass... Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Let's go ahead and vote on the remaining balance for item number 1.
And Madam President, if I may?
Yes.
The Department of Building and Safety recommends that 1A be received and filed as the fees have been paid, and that 1I also be received and filed as the fees have been paid, and that item 1H be continued to October 15th, and the remaining items, that those liens be confirmed.
Okay, without objection. That will be the order. Let's vote on the remaining items on item 1. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and vote on item 38. I believe there is a substitute motion that's been submitted. Has that been circulated?
That is correct. The substitute motion has been posted and circulated. The first vote would be whether to substitute.
All right, let's go ahead and vote on that. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, now that item's before us. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you. Could I just move on to general public comment? We have a number of speakers. B. Darshwin, are you here? B., general public comment?
Okay, the question is for Councilman Mitch O'Farrell. Mitch, isn't human life more important than a resurfaced street? The answer you should say is yes. What I would like you to do is sign a waiver so a family can move into a home which they have built. They need the basic necessities, water and gas. Please sign a waiver so the family, which is now homeless, can move into this home. Please, thank you.
Ms. Mr. O'Farrell? Yes?
I just spoke with...
I just spoke with my district director, who's been working with you all on this and is verifying some information before we proceed with anything, and I think you're very well informed of that. I just spoke with her, and you had a conversation last week about this. So, as soon as we get that information, then we will contact you again to talk about next steps. So, thank you for coming in, and just know that we're gonna verify that information, and we'll go from there.
Because it's been several months, and I would not...
Thank you, Madam President.
Ma'am, thank you very much. Your time is up. If you want to speak to someone on the ropes, the sergeant can go ahead and direct you to a staff member. Thank you. The next speaker is Ziggy Cruz. Are you here? How about Norman Bale? Norman, you want to come on up? What about Lauren Natali, are you here? Ziggy is here? I've been calling her name, she's not coming up.
Ziggy's here, I just don't know where she is right now.
Okay, hold on for just a second, sir. How about Lauren? Is that you back? And Bill Watkins? Go ahead, Norman.
Okay. The vehicle...the vehicle code defines dwelling unit as a structure designed to be used as a residence, designed, not necessarily lived in at any particular moment. The DOT has an unwritten and secret policy that vacant homes are not dwelling units. Why does this matter? Let's say you have a block with six homes on it, and four of those homes sign a petition for preferential parking. That would be 2/3, and that block would fail. But by claiming that one home is not a dwelling unit because it's vacant, the math changes to 4 out of 5, 80%, and that block would pass. How does the DOT define vacant? Well, they don't. They take...a petition comes in, and it just says vacant. They accept that at face value. They don't even verify that the home is vacant.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you. Lauren is...I'm gonna call Ziggy again. Not in the room? Okay, go ahead, Lauren.
Sorry. Good morning, I'm Lauren Isoli from AIDS Healthcare Foundation. When it comes to Los Angeles's measures to relieve the pressure of a ballooning homelessness crisis, we are severely lacking in the availability of affordable housing. In June, the L.A. Times reported 500 homeless veterans have rent vouchers but no place to cash them in. There are many steps involved to solving the homelessness crisis, but we cannot provide false hope that we can give people safety, security, and stability through accessible housing when we don't have it. The right move for L.A.'s housing and homelessness crisis must be toward affordable housing. Thank you.
Good morning, Bill.
Good morning. Morning, Jose, from my district, and everybody. Mitch, thanks, Mitch. I don't know how many times I'm gonna come here again. I'm not running for City Council. I'm removing myself from this land soon, as we remove the Cherokee people from their land. I am tired of the land theft that we've committed. You'll have a report, all 15 of you upstairs, on police helicopters. I think we've continued to wage a war here since 1492, and I'm tired of it. My people stole land. I come from English stock, and we stole land with guns. We wonder why we kill our citizens with police. We've been doing that since the start. I love you guys very much. Sorry if I've been a pain sometimes. I hope every once in a while, I helped with the microphone, keeping it clean up here, and I really appreciate everyone here. Look for something in your mailboxes today. I didn't make 32 copies, so I'm gonna take 15 up to the fourth floor. I love you guys very much. Thanks for your service. Keep Native America high in our hearts. They meet tonight at the county chambers, and we need to raise their ideas up. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, members, that is gonna... Are you Ziggy?
Yes.
Okay, come on up.
Sorry.
Your one minute of general public comment.
I may not need that much, but thank you for letting me speak.
No problem.
I'm here on an issue that I brought up to the L.A. Transportation Committee about three weeks ago. Preferential, now, time limit restrictions, parking signs in our neighborhood, they popped up literally overnight without any outreach to the community. Mr. Bonin's office said he will have staff get in touch with us. Ms. Martinez was present at that meeting. I just spoke to Mr. Bruins, which is three weeks delayed or belated. In any way, we're hoping to call in a meeting, because when a church gets the opportunity to reach out to council to get time-restricted parking from 8:00 a.m. until midnight, seven days a week, without any, you know, exemption, that sounds to me like preferential parking for the church, not for the community. So, please reach out to the people that actually voted you into office and not take one side over the other. Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you very much. That concludes our speakers for general public comment. So, we're gonna go ahead and close our general public segment of our agenda. Okay, let's go ahead and move on to item 44. Mr. Krikorian?
Thank you, Madam President. We're preparing a technical amendment for item 44, so if we could just continue that until tomorrow, that'd probably be easiest.
Okay, without objection, that will be the order. We'll continue item 44 till tomorrow.
And that would be to September 18th.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and move on to item 57. That's also Mr. Krikorian's. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. And item 57, just, again, a really technical amendment. The language of the resolution indicates state legislative program that should be amended to, say, federal legislative program.
Let's go ahead and vote on that. As amended, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you.
And Madam President, there is a request to send item 54 forthwith today.
Okay, without objection, that will be the order. What's next?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Posted and referred, members, are there any announcements? Forgot to mention, the desk is clear. Are there any announcements, members? If you all could please rise for adjourned motions, including the members of our public. Are there any adjourned motions to my right? Any adjourned motions to my left? Seeing none, our meeting is adjourned.